You guys ready? Do whatever. Be ready. Okay, the time is now six o'clock. We'll begin the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Dawson County Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start with invocation by Mr. John Maloney.
This power has heavily followed. Thank you for this time. We've come together. We asked that you watch over us. We ask you watch over Dawson County. And just help us make good decisions that works best for the county and guide us through this. We ask this in your sense of prayer. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone now will do the roll call. Hey, we're all here except for Mr. Hamby, who was not able to attend tonight due to a prior commitment. There will be a planning commission meeting on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Gentlemen, is there any changes to the minutes? Or is there a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Motion carries. Do you have any changes to the agenda or do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. Motion carries. If you're here to speak in favor or opposition to any application and you've made contributions more than two hundred fifty dollars to any local official campaign. There's a form that you will need to fill out. And you can see harmony for that. Old Business Item Number One, Presentation of Z A twenty-one dash eighteen. And Special Use twenty-one dash zero five Benjamin Smith. This was tabled from the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting. Is someone here to speak for the applicant? Please come forward and write your name and address on the pad of paper on the podium. And state your name and address. And please tell us about your application.
Just our.
Sure, go ahead. Sorry about that.
I've purchased what is now five point two six acres on Patient's Way, which is off of New Bethel Church Road. I'm building my my shop first prior to my main residence. And I also have a sawmill that I'm going to use for the non-residential structure. Which I guess I need a permit for that as well, but it also has to be residential agricultural. That's why I'm here.
Yeah. So the sawmill is just going to be for personal use?
It is personally used, and I can only use it for like decorative stuff on the house and anything for the non-residential structure.
Is there any questions of the applicant?
Are you aware of the stipulations that were put as far as times of operation and? My staff?
I'm not. I'll look them up. But I don't. I work nights and I don't get up to the crack of dawn. So if it's. If it's those, I wouldn't be operating it in nuisance.
I can read them to you. The staff proposed conditions where the sawmill shall not interfere with the quiet use and enjoyment of the outside environment. Of neighboring property owners. Operational hours should be between the hours of eight AM and eight PM, Monday through Friday, ten AM to six PM, Saturdays and Sundays. Sawmill should not operate be operated for more than four hours on Saturday and Sunday. Sawmill shall not be operated after dark. Lumber produced by the sawmill should not be used for structural materials in the construction of the applicant's single family residence, but may be used as hardwood flooring or other decorative elements. You have any problems with any of those?
What's for?
Any other questions for the opening? Okay, thank you, sir.
That's all I had. Don't need to stay for anything.
You might want to stay until we vote on it. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone speak speak opposed? Opposed to the application? Seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. In motion carries, this is a recommend recommending board. So this will be heard by the Board of Commissioners on five nineteen and they will make the final decision. The old business item number two, Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash zero four Fox Creek Properties. Public hearing for this was held March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. There will be another public hearing at the Board of Commissioners meeting on five nineteen. Can the applicant come up and tell us if anything's changed since the last meeting? Yeah, state your name and address, please.
Kenneth Wood, three fifty Research Court, B Street Corners, Georgia. I've got the a brief presentation. I changed it up based on what we heard. We had a follow-up community meeting. Probably, I don't know if any of you guys were able to attend. It was a little over a hundred people that were able to host. Ended up being just under about three hours, being able to probably presented for twenty-five minutes and then were able to, you know, answer questions for several hours and get almost everything we could think of kind of on the table and kind of running through. And so some of the some of the questions that popped up were about traffic, about what the taxes are, what the impact fees are. What the plans are. The buffers came up about what we're doing, what we're stipulating, and new stipulations have come out from that meeting that I can go over with you guys in just a minute. Running through the plan and then other questions just about what the actual traffic changes were going to be and how the studies would move going forward. If I can pull it up, I can kind of walk and go through that.
Excuse me, we were just notified by the clerk for the Board of Commissioners that any presentation will have to be held on the May nineteenth meeting and not here tonight. Certainly, the applicant can speak.
Okay.
But if there's a presentation to be held until the May nineteenth B O C meeting.
Okay, so no, no further presentation, but you can just give us an overview.
Describe it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So what we talked about was the the taxes was roughly just under five million for the per annual for the year for the project. They had a lot of questions about that that we couldn't answer that night. Coming out, the impact fees were just over ten million for the site, seven of that to the Water Authority, the rest going to Dawson County. And that's how we broke it out. We were not able to. We knew roughly what it was, but they were asking us to calculate that. From the plan where Savannah Trace is, which is on kind of the bottom left, which is the bordering neighborhood. We have five different conditions that we've been working on with them in looking at gaining their support of the application. Number one was a section of the property to the north and east that surrounds them where we have our development of the Savannah Trace neighborhood as shown on our zoning plan. We'll have two hundred feet of undisturbed buffer and then additional fifty feet that is replanted as evergreens. Emergency vehicle is the emergency vehicle access that would come down from there is the only thing that can penetrate that. Going into that area at all, everything else is to remain undisturbed and within that fifty replanted. A five-foot black vinyl chain link fence will be installed around the entire border of Savannah Trace for the property line. The fill still terminate prior to entering any of the stream buffers for any environmental disturbance and not place with any of these streams. The single-family detached lots that border the two hundred and fifty-foot combined buffer and landscape area shall not be permitted to encroach or construct any improvements within the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer and landscape area. And the restrictions shall apply to the residential HOA in addition to the lot owners. So basically showing it on the plat. That in perpetuity, they're not allowed to enter that area. To be an access easement provided for emergency only through the development. Shown on the site plan so that we're coming to there and you'll have a gate. I don't know if we were able to show that, but we created a rendering of the gate that we showed the residents and it would have an emergency only with a lockbox. And then it would have a gate on the side that would fit a essentially, you could have a car, a golf cart or pedestrian in that lockbox would only be for Savannah Trace. It would not be for our residents to come toward them. They can only walk toward the mixed-use development. So we'd be able to go through, get to the public road and walk to the mixed-use development. The emergency access isn't a Savannah Trace located in the border. She'll have a gate with the Knox box, basically what I was just describing. And a card and sidewalk access for the residents of Savannah Trace. And so those were the the basically the conditions that we talked about that were going through that area that would be specific to that area of the plan. Then we talked about the road improvements. So the road improvements that we talked about was at the intersection for basically Lumpkin Campground and four hundred. And so we'd basically go from a two to a four lane. And then update all of the signal that would apply to that on both sides, all of the signal heads, each side. So essentially, if you're on the approach. I know this is hard, like watching me instead of on the on the screen, but if you're approaching four hundred over a thousand feet out, you will have a new right-hand turn lane that will get built and then that right turn island would get wide. If you're entering, whether it's across the street or turning right off of four hundred onto Lumpkin Campground. There would be an additional lane that would also carry past the development as well. In addition to that, there's also be another right, a dual right that would carry in. And you could take the right end so that trucks can free and not ever be on Lumpkin Campground if they're entering into the first right-hand turn that goes into toward the industrial development. And then all of the signal timing for that. D cell lanes at all the entrances and left turn lanes. So essentially that stretch would go from about a two to four and then in places of five. But basically a five lane width for there for the turn lanes. And then what we also talked about is our study with the D R I. We have to look at that intersection. If we have any impacts across the street or any impacts on fifty-three that that study finds, as you would be going through permitting, then we would also have to look at that signal timing and any additional link to turn lanes to be created there. And so we talked about what those traffic improvements were and what we'd have to do. And then we basically went over exactly where that occurs on the plan and how that would occur. And then one of the last things and trying to remember was about the phasing, how the project would be phased out. And so the first phase is basically coming in and making sure that we are doing what we're saying we're doing. So phase one in a stipulation would basically read that we would get the park and the and the commercial area, all the parking lot, the hard surfaces, the park, the parking for the park, the roads that surround it. We would start on the residential here, that commercial part for phase one. We had also put in the roads going over to four hundred so that all of that network, the phase one part is all of that frontage. All of the infrastructure, everything going back out. And then that way, the phase one would only contain a portion of the residential. It would contain all of the phase one that you see on the plan. And it would be padded so that essentially it's a finished, it's park. You guys could start having festivals as soon as it's safe after construction to start building the momentum, to start getting retailers interested in coming there or some type of brewery or some other type of restaurant. Everything to be more local in nature is what we talked about, not nationals, like not like a, you know, a national brand. There's not going to be like a a big national store open. This would be more local, you know, destination oriented retail. That's what we're going after for this type of thing. So you you could have essentially a festival because the park size on the latest creation is over an acre in in size, if you're looking at it. And so it's gotten much larger, a lot more parking that's there. And so all of that would be completed as part of the first phase. And then after that, it would move forward with, you know, pushing out into more of the residential. So that industrial section, the road going over the industrial section that the Economic Development Authority wants to see moving forward. And then the frontage, commercial section, and then a portion of the residential section just to the left to get in a portion of the detached, a portion of the attached and and the multifamily. And so that would be the first phase. And so that limits our disturbance area and we're just explaining how you know, we're not going to open up this entire site. You know, we're going to chunk it. You know, it's a ten-year project. And so we're going to have to move through it in chunks so that we're not disturbing a massive amount of area for stormwater, for disturbance, for erosion and for everything else for the site. And so there's a lot of conversations related to that phase one and how all that worked for it. Outside of that, there was a a lot of comments related to I think visually about, you know, once, once it's there, how did the, how did the, how did the trails work? How did the golf carts work? How did the sidewalks work? And we basically have a something in the presentation we gave out that shows where all the sidewalks and all the cart paths are, and it's been expanded. And so essentially between trails running through, you know, the woods and the sidewalks, you can essentially get anywhere within the development and get back over to the city center side. Or if you live in one of the developments and want to get to one of the amenity areas, every every set of residential has its own amenity. And so we tried to make everything super connected, but also very connected so that everybody can get back to the park area because that's kind of the the central hub that we're going for. And you know, we definitely had people that with a lot of, you know, with a lot of concerns about about traffic. But overall, it was very positive and that it was great to be able to answer all the comments and got a lot of claps toward the end. So that was great. It was great to have a lot of people come up, especially after the meeting and voice support for that. And so that was a big difference, you know, for us to be able to hear that and then make the changes to the plan based on what we talked about with the buffers and everything. And so with the conditions that you see in those packets, you'll also see the buffers that we described and have put that on the paper. And making sure that that is, you know, what we're talking about and looking forward to do.
The the emergency access.
Yes.
Has it been determined if that rides way is is that county?
Right away. Private. It's private right away.
Is HOA?
It is.
So what are you going to do if you can't get access?
We'd have to come. We'd have to come up and come down to fifty-three. It'd be a longer trek. And basically it would still be just emergency. It would still be Knox box access, but we'd have to, we're just, you know, obviously that's more disturbance, you know, going down through there, but essentially you'd have to run down to fifty-three.
Yeah, it looks like you've got a stream crossing too.
Yeah, that that one stream's a little, it it kind of comes down the slope pretty far. And we've seen it where it just looked like a ditch and then seeing it after a rain. So I don't know. It's definitely definitely going to be state waters. But yeah, I mean, we would definitely be sensitive if we had to come down that way, but we're hoping we can figure something out going the other way.
Any other questions?
Do you have problems with stipulations as far as I heard a lot of your stipulations that you put on it, but obviously no pad grading? Which would be a stipulation when you, it sounds like you're addressing that, but obviously not. No pad grading. Each side needs to be opened up as a separate.
Yeah, we just, we just, we'd want to phase it. Obviously, you know, you choose, you know, if you had thirty homes in this phase, you'd obviously go through there and 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 start constructing and then, you know, get it to pad grade and then start going vertical.
As far as the whole site.
No, 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 sir. We're definitely phasing it. And Bill is here, the owner. He did a great job of addressing the crowd about the phasing. There was, there was definitely some comments about is this going to be your money or is this, you know, foreign money was 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 some of the questions that we were explaining how, you know, the financing work. And so he walked through how that phase and work because it's definitely a really large, it's a large track of land. And so we obviously have to take it down in pieces, but really the point is is getting the phase one in because that is going to create the energy of this mixed-use development.
The other. The other thing looking at as far as your traffic study, I noticed one of the stipulations by the county was that you'll provide traffic studies, updated traffic studies annually.
That's right. So as we're moving through, what we talked about was obviously trip gens change. And so what we what we were committing to is that as the project moves along, that we'll update the study because there was comments from the neighbors about how did, how do you, how do you capture, like we see development going on. And so we see it going on and how do you capture that? And Abdul came up and explained, we have the 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 traffic engineer that generated, he explained how they do the growth rate and how they capture everything that's going on at the moment with permits that are active and the files from G dot, but they also do the growth rate of growing traffic over time to account for anything they may have missed. But then that was the other stipulation that we said we'd do just to show that we're, you know, as as stuff evolves. And so that we'll be able to document also, you know, traffic may grow, but ours will stay, our analysis will stay steady. So we'll be able to kind of see that. And so that was, that was kind of where that came from.
Would you have a problem with the stipulation? It's my understanding G dot's looking at redesigning Lumpkin Campground in Georgia four hundred so it's not skewed. Have you heard that?
I have. We have not. I have. We met with, we met with G dot to get the okay with the access on four hundred and and what we were looking at for Lumpkin, but they didn't talk. They talked about the other side, how it had a limited approach and that needed to be fixed because people back up on the other side trying to get to four hundred. And it was, there's some signal timing things that we're going to be doing.
I would just ask to the stipulation that obviously you're going to work with G dog because you got to do intersection improvements, but
Yes.
Your site is overlaid with a possible intersection design change by G dot if there is.
Yeah, I mean, we have a huge right away. So, yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, we'd be, we know we got to, we're going to be coordinating with constantly with G dot. So we're fine with that.
Okay, the other thing, the other thing is that would you have a problem with the stipulation basically stating that this is a this, your plan that you're showing us being concept only that throat depths, intersection design and site and distances between intersections will be final, have a final approval with the with the county engineer.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because that's.
Because, you know, basically you should, we have a site plan, but I don't want the site plan to be looked at like this is a a a final design that throat depths may need to change, intersection distances between intersections and may need to change based on the traffic study.
Absolutely.
Approval.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're anticipating, we would anticipate that we we feel like we got it pretty close to what it is, but absolutely if they find something that we need an extra lane or something, then.
Or distances between intersections may be a concern.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, the timing of the traffic studies, are those seeming it in? They're going to be at certain metrics that if you finish pod A, for instance, and you do another traffic study.
I would.
Finish the retail, you do it, done the traffic study.
I would think it would be on phases, most likely is what makes the most sense to me or either annual or the only way I think you could tie it is by plating or annually.
I think the comment from Public Works was annual.
As the build out, just because, just because, you know, as as constructions moving, you know, you could get, you could be going through and and if, you know, with the whole supply shortage, you could you get delayed a month. And so it seems like if it's just annually, it's might be easier.
I did have the privilege to attend your meeting and it was very well put together.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And I I found that the major concern was traffic.
Yes.
Most of the people were were concerned about how this is going to affect their problems that they have currently.
Yes, especially on the the other roads. But it was, we learned a lot about the other approach that Abdul is looking at too.
I would really like to see more emphasis placed upon Lumpkin Campground Road, even going up to fifty-three with the traffic studies and and would you find if even a third lane needed to be added at some point?
Yeah, I mean, like I say, I mean, the way the traffic studies and the Greta is set up is that that study will move forward with G dot and then your traffic engineer. And if they go through that and deem that, you know, we have issues with that. That's what we were saying is we're going to have to comply with 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 what the county needs.
The pod A retail section you've got listed as twenty-nine thousand eight hundred square feet. I would really like to see that as a minimum moving forward if if conditions present themselves that the economy booms that you could increase that at some point.
It, I mean, the definitely the pad, I mean, we're trying to give like a in in our images, we're trying to give a flavor of kind of what we've seen, like when we're doing some stuff within Duluth and downtown Swanee about, you know, it's like, it looks big, it looks big. And like a lot of restaurants, when we break it down, it was like thirty-one. So we're trying to emulate some of that, but definitely the pads, when you look at on our site, because the park is so big. The scale of the plan is really large. You know, that park is over an acre and it looks like an east and egg on the plan. And so there's definitely room to expand that as as you start having, you know, festivals and bringing people in and concerts and 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 bringing in food trucks and that demand grows. If, I mean, by all means, if it, if it ends up being that, you know, people want to come in there and just one, let's say a brewery wants ten thousand and other places need more. I mean, we definitely love the ability to increase that. The only thing we don't want to do is we don't want to turn into a like it. It doesn't want to, this project doesn't want to be a like a national retailer type thing. It wants to be y'all's local place as a destination. That's really what we're trying to make it be and not a, you know, not to have a a pet coat there type thing.
Any other questions?
You mentioned phase one during the park, the commercial stuff, but you said a portion of residential. What percentage do you anticipate that portion of residential be? Reason I'm asking, we have a lot of people who come in here and tell us they're going to they're going to build this stuff out first and then do the residential and it's usually reverse that. And that's why I'm asking that question.
It now, well. The apartments, I think he's planning, you're planning to do them all at once, right? So those would be and and probably two hundred residential units at most. I will say I would really prefer that the traffic studies be tied to impact and what we do rather than a time. Because I don't know what y'all think, but I think we're fixing to have another recession. And and it very possibly may sit there without the odds of it not having a pause in the next three years or somewhere between slim and none, in my personal opinion. Just because of the economy and the interest rates.
Would you have a problem with stipulation wording changing to say as or as deemed necessary by the county engineer?
That would be fine.
Okay, so right now the county engineer had this, this is their comment and but maybe we'll add the statement as or deemed necessary by.
And we just.
In that way, that way, you know, nothing's changed in a year than, but. In that way, that way, it, you know, nothing's changed in a year, then, but you have a site fixed to open up and they can require. Based on that site.
It'd be wonderful.
Yeah, if you wanna write your name and address on, on the pad there.
That sounds like twenty to twenty-five percent.
That's, yeah, that was, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Um, it was my understanding that they did get permission to, for the emergency access, did.
No, that's what he's saying there.
They still.
They're negotiating. If they don't get it, they'll have to come over to fifty-three.
Okay.
Much farther.
Okay.
When do you think you're gonna know that?
So really soon. I mean, we're actively trying to work on that, because I mean, it also has a benefit. What do you mean? Take a non-behicular solution also to enter into your property and get to the, the cart and get down to the downtown center also as a, as a benefit. So we're just trying to work on those details, but it's top priority. We just now talked to the fire marshal and he's told me what, what he wants and that's helped here recently. So I know exactly what we have to do. So it's one of two or three ways that we can access in a different way.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll now close it to the board for discussion. Any discussion?
Well, as I said, I did attend a meeting and I thought they put on a good presentation. I am cognizant to the citizens that are upset with any new development in Dawson County. I would like to point out that the city of Dawsonville just last night approved a development on Highway nine for two hundred and twenty rooftops with zero impact fee to the county or the city. Um, this area is growing and we need to do it in a managed way. And these gentlemen have put on a, a good presentation and I thank you for that. The, um, the stipulations they've agreed to, I'd have those added if we move forward.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Most to approve with stipulations of traffic study. Um, the change of the wording as deemed necessary, either yearly or as deemed necessary by the traffic, by the county traffic engineer. Um, no pad grading. And, uh, the site plan should be considered concept only. Uh, the intersection design and distances and, uh, between intersections and throat depths, all, all those basic traffic engineering requirements. Should be considered concept only on this plan, that may change as deemed by the traffic engineer or their designated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of second to recommend approval, please vote. Motion carries three to one. This is a recommendation for approval and it will go to the Board of Commissioners on May nineteenth. Following the four P M. Work session. So if you're for or against, please show up to that meeting to voice your opinion. Uh, new business, number one, application for variance. Uh, V R twenty-two dash zero eight, Karen Martin. Someone here to present for Karen Martin? And please state your name and address.
Karen Martin, fifteen seventy-two Water Row Court, Swanee, Georgia.
And what's the?
I just, I bought a, a piece of property on Eagle Ridge Road in twenty nineteen. Um, I understand that recently two other people have come and gotten a variance for thirty feet. In that I had last, two months ago, put paperwork in for twenty. My builder called me last night, asked me if I could ask for maybe twenty-five or thirty. That's up to y'all. I don't wanna cause any problems. But, um, uh, for me to use the flattest part of the property, it's kinda necessary for me to stay on the front. Most of the property up there is, it's on a ridge, so everything's kinda close. I don't know if y'all have seen pictures that I have, and I have other pictures too. My, um, concern was that I was gonna have to put the front door on the side. I would love to put the front door on the front and have a little stoop. And I know that Les Brinson had said, you're gonna be hard pressed to do that, Miss Martin, if you, you know, only get twenty. But it just ask them, doesn't hurt to ask, just ask them. So I'm hoping that the last two thirds of the property is a steep. And I'm trying to stay on the flatter part of property.
Okay. Sharon, or can we modify her request or do we have to? Okay.
Okay, he said.
Yeah, I guess you would have to come back again if you.
All right, pay another fee and everything.
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, let me see if I can, yeah, okay, thank you. I just, my, that's my mistake. I just went for the twenty and he had asked for way more, you know, I had gotten it down to the twenty, so I was hoping I could get twenty-five, but.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of V R twenty-two dash zero eight? Seeing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition to V R twenty-two dash zero eight? Seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. You know, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. One second.
Motion in a second to approve the variance. Motion carried four zero. So you have your variance. Uh, next item, presentation of V R twenty-two dash zero nine, Andrew Eckert. Please, uh, state your name and address and write it on the pads.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Andrew Eckert and I live on two thirty-two, uh, Lake Circle in Dawson.
Cause why you need variance?
Yeah, hi, uh, so, uh, we bought a house a couple of years ago. Um, and, uh, we've been unable to use the garage that came with the property itself. It's somewhat unusable based on its position in the back of the house. So after working with, uh, a builder, we came up with a possible solution of adding an additional two-car garage on the back of the house, but detached and off to the, as you're looking at the house, off to the right-hand side of that. Unfortunately, um, the, um, I'll say the real estate in that area is somewhat difficult. Because it does back up to the core and it does back up to my neighbor's, uh, yard to some extent. And we're actually trying to change that so that we actually have another easement that was done many, many years ago. We're trying to correct that, um, as well as build a, uh, new garage on the side of the house. So it's gonna be a detached, uh, garage, so.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
Have you worked with your neighbors since you're talking about it does back up to your neighbor's property?
It, it does, and I did. So, yeah, so most of the neighbors kinda know us, cause I work from home and I do a lot of.
You said they were okay with it?
Yeah. Damn, it's been B C R property.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of V R twenty-two dash zero nine? Seeing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition of V R twenty-two dash zero nine? Seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the variance. Motion carries four to zero. You have your variance. Next item on new business, uh, presentation of V R twenty-two dash ten, Joe Bias. Is there someone here to speak for Mr. Bias? Please write your name and address on the pad paper.
Good evening, I'm Joe Bias. I live at eight six five three Highway one thirty-six west. I'm here tonight to request a variance to put a building up. Storage and stuff like that on my property. Reason I wanna put it in the place that I require a variance is because anywhere else I would put it, I would have to tear down a lot of trees. Do a lot of substantial more grading than I want to. And I have spoken with all my neighbors and they are okay with it.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of V R twenty-two dash ten? Seeing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition of V R twenty-two dash ten? Seeing none, close it to the board for discussion. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to recommend or to approve the variance. Motion carries four zero. You have your variance. Uh, next item, rezoning, uh, presentation of Z A twenty-two dash ten, George and Phyllis Robinson. Is there someone here to speak for the applicant?
Yes, sir, we're, we are George and Phyllis Robinson. Our address is one, 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 five Dawson Forest Road West. Uh, and that is immediately adjacent, our border, we border the, uh, Dawson Forest. So, um, two years ago, we moved, we bought the property, we bought actually three lots, only two are in question tonight. We bought three lots, one's about fourteen acres, one's an acre and a half, with the intent of two things, having three homes on it. One, we have two sons, one son and daughter-in-law is already living in the existing home. Uh, we have just completed another home and our son is just getting out of the army. They'll build a third home in a couple of years, probably. And I, you can see the plot plan, I think y'all have, have that. Uh, the, the long-term intent for us is to have a multi-generational farm. Uh, where we are basically right now growing microgreens in a indoor vertical farm. We're doing indoor, so we can keep it organic, we can keep it clean, we can do all that. Um, we would like to, uh, rezone to R A for a couple of main reasons. And it allows, allows us some flexibility of what we can sell. If we can have people coming to the, to our home to pick up materials or do any, any kind of communications that way. Um, long-term and in, uh, long-term plan, uh, in Harmony helped us a lot with a meeting we had a year, year and a half ago. We, we, we would like to, um, actually put in some perhaps raised bed gardens as a kind of a, of family garden, a little bit that size to complement our existing, uh, uh, our existing offerings. Um, so we have broken the property into three pieces, all a little bit over five acres to meet the zoning requirements. Uh, and we are looking to get rezoned, downzoned actually to R A for, for the, those purposes.
So any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of Z A twenty-two dash ten? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Z A twenty-two dash ten. Seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second to recommend approval of the rezoning. Motion carries four zero. This is a recommendation. Uh, your rezoning will be heard, Board of Commissioners meeting on May nineteenth. Presentation of Z A twenty-two dash eleven, Tyler Burke. Is there someone here to speak for Mr. Burke? Please write your name and, um, or name and, uh, address on the pad and state your name.
Uh, Tyler Burke, uh, current address thirteen forty-seven Cleve Rat Road, Dawsonville.
Tell us about your request.
Um, it's actually old family land, it's time to go back home. I just recently sold my house down in Grizzle and trying to go up to my parents and build up there. It's my aunt's property, she's getting older, she's not really able to take care of it all. It's all fields and stuff, so she doesn't have any children, so she said I was the next best thing. So here I am.
Is there any questions to the applicant? This is a rezoning from R A to R S R M M.
Yeah, from what I understood, talking to Harmony, but I guess, cause I'm, I'm gonna be getting the majority of it. She's only keeping like a two acre portion, a little over two acres. Would the whole thing be rezoned or just her part?
It's just the two acres.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I could still build on the, that's like seven point two.
Yeah, it'll stay, it'll be, still be R A.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of Z A twenty-two dash eleven? Seeing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition of Z A twenty-two dash eleven? Seeing now, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Any discussion, gentlemen? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to recommend approval of Z A twenty-two dash eleven. Motion carries four zero. This will be heard before the Board of Commissioners on May nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearings. Uh, item one, presentation of comprehensive plan minor update, public hearing one of two. Second hearing on this will be on April twenty-first. Which is Thursday.
Yes, yes, in two days. Uh, back in twenty twenty, the Dawson County adopted three, uh, new zoning categories. Uh, res two, res three, and a commercial highway intensive. And, um, we have to go through the process of adding it to our comprehensive plans. We have to pull two public hearings, um, to add it into what you see in your backup as, um, basically the pages of the comp plan. It's pretty straightforward what we do, have to go through the process.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak, uh, in favor or opposition to the comprehensive plan minor update? Seeing none, the, I guess you need a recommendation. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to recommend approval. Motion carries four zero. Item two, presentation of land use resolution update.
Your, uh, section one twenty-one sixty-nine out of the land use code is your page two oh three. If you turn the page, it's a very simple change, uh, on two oh four. Go down to number five, basically, this is one of the only, excuse me. One of the only land uses that is missing the phrase, unless the variance is granted. And I, I will need a vote on it.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to the land use resolution update? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second to recommend approval. Motion. Carries four zero. Item three, presentation of subdivision regulations updates.
Uh, yes, this is a, a basic draft, um, for you to consider. That would allow, um, a family lot variance to not have to come before a public hearing. But to be processed at the staff level, you know, you see the rezonings, just like this previous applicant. Where it's a family parcel, they don't have five or they don't want five acres. And we could do a family lot split in the R A zoning with some, um, conditions, not too heavy conditions. But some conditions as far as, um, the deed has to be love and affection, and there's some other qualifications in there. But, um, it's, it is in the. But, um, it's, it is in the code currently, but it's a public hearing variance and this way it would be at the staff.
Gotcha, okay. Any questions? Uh, is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to this change to the subdivision regulations? Seeing that, we have a motion.
Motion to approve. So.
Motion in a second to recommend approval. Motion carries four zero. Updates by planning and development.
Um, the month of May is Building Safety Month and we're gonna participate, um, so, you know, proclamation, there's um, four weeks in the month of May that we, basically, there's a theme for each weight week from safety to career. And, um, we'll be participating. It's sponsored by the International Code Council.
Okay. Gentlemen, is there a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.